All right, call this meeting board, please stand up for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Uh, please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Full call please. Here.
Right here.
Here.
Right here.
Here.
Uh, there was an executive session held prior to tonight's council meeting to discuss personnel. I have two additional items to add to the agenda. Uh, one, the inter-dat quotes, and two, the resignation of Sarah Chapel. Do I have a second to add those two to the agenda?
Josh, one other question I don't see as up in order we might have to add. Okay, we got.
Good, okay. So do I have a second to add those two to the agenda?
I'll second.
Rogers?
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Hey, sir.
Is there any public comments at this time on agenda items? Public comments on agenda items at this time? All right, uh, approval minutes and reports, minutes of May eighth and twenty-second, and reports from the fire department, police department, treasurer, code office, health department, and planning commission. Do I have a second?
Rogers?
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
America from the arrow photos, the burrow, um, Greg?
Good evening. My name is Greg Cromer. I come from these America from the sky. I've been working on a quest of sorts to photograph every community in Pennsylvania. And I just wanted to show you one that I took here. I've also been adding to the collection. I wanted to see if the maybe you all can just hold it up for your walls here.
What is a photo, um, sort of like that, Ron?
Some of these different sizes.
Oh, just coming different sizes, okay, even better.
This size, twenty by twenty, eight is one ninety-five to the frame. I have them from sixteen by twenty, ninety-five, one fifty, two fifty, up to two ninety-five. For me, twenty-seven by forty, framed, mounted. I can print larger than that. I don't frame larger than that because that's the part in this law. Twenty-two or three.
Twenty-seven by forty is two ninety-five.
Two ninety-five.
Right here, I'll make sure you could copy that there. That's awesome.
And any print that you purchase for an additional fifty, you can have the digital file basically in each. Those, uh, put it on their Facebook website. And you can see this picture on the website at AmericaFromTheSky.com. About a third of Pennsylvania done, and on top of that, about four thousand places across thirty-two states. Yeah, beautiful city. This was taken in October a year ago.
And what angle is that?
So I'm from the southwest looking northeast. It was an afternoon, so that was the way the sun gave me the best, with the reflection.
Is there any timeframe you'd like to back, you'd like to purchase?
Oh, no, no.
Just whenever, okay.
Network, twenty-four hours.
See there?
How long do you go to be there?
Well, um, I've got to go up to Hughesville for another council meeting.
Okay, well, sorry, I'm like, uh.
But I'm, I'm in the area because I shot just about every town.
I think my opinion is I like to say, hey, you know, I'm confident from that side.
Yeah, I think there's no doubt.
And I think the twenty-seven by forty and, uh, I don't know if we can get three hundred dollars together from.
We'll go find someplace.
Someplace, so go ahead and.
For stuff like that. And then my next question is, um, this, obviously, you want to purchase, if you'd like to obviously show it off. So if we put it on our Facebook, is already say, hey, here you are, is anyone else in the public like to purchase?
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, like, I didn't want to, I didn't know what your, you know, agreements were. We couldn't do that, and stuff like that, if that's okay.
That's correct. This is the biggest case of DM forward I've ever seen.
Okay.
Somebody buys a big truck or flies us.
That's right.
You know, there is a discount, um, so basically there's a bottom two, smaller two, there's a twenty-dollar discount, there's a forty-five dollar discount. So you all want to hit me in order with them with the next couple of weeks.
When you purchase? That's the twenty-seven by forty.
Okay, well, Stuart, no.
You get a discount. Awesome, that's, that's great. Any other questions, anyone?
Yeah, so if there's any, any desire, just let me know in email or phone like this week. And I'll be back. And we have worst case, there's perhaps we can, with the demand serving forty-three and things.
So, so can you also date these photos?
No, I, I, I have them dated on the website so everyone can see where they are. The first time I did a show, the whole day, I was, do you have a different date? So I wrote that sucker right off there.
Well, it should be.
Yeah.
I'll put the question down if they want the, on the picture or if they want to add it to the frame or.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the question is a good one. Do you want this with the added to it?
I mean, I'm not opposed to it because that number of time, you know, a hundred years or a half, that must go around.
Some are expensive, right?
Can you put it on the back? Why does that?
Yes, we know what your. That's trademark there. That works. Now, we'll definitely be in touch and see how many want to order, please, for ourselves. And when we get them in, we'll obviously put on our social media pages and outline there. So everyone else, if anyone else comes from the public, they can also be in contact with us.
All right, very nice, thank you very much.
No, thank you for bringing this, it's awesome.
Occasionally. Occasionally Winchester's right here. Usually have a couple hundred ninety-seven.
It's a hard life.
I'm now a pilot.
Don't eat what?
But now I have a state of honor role to play. I give the other one back and then the next.
Question.
My price is down to price.
Yeah. That's great, we'll be in touch for sure. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, shade tree commission.
There's always going to get ten thousand, you're never going to get five thousand.
It's over, it's over.
I'm here to, on, there, our, uh, the shade tree commission. We were trying to decide what to say. Joe did the artwork on this, gave you the agenda. Our Facebook is also. Those were, they reached out to us and they, um, expressed a desire to collaborate. And we look to them as mentors because they've been with the shade tree commission themselves for years. And, um, they are a community, uh, under the, um, Tree City USA. And also, um, you mentioned with this future that was just shown. During the, um, sandwich stroll and the kickoff, people have noticed the architecture in this city. It's not the first time, but they're also, it always ends up with a question of why is your city not capitalizing on what you have here, historic value and architecture? And that question goes to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
New business, there is new business. Uh, one of the agenda additions was the inter-dat quote that's in front of you. So with that being said, uh, there's additional computer telephone back in the finance department for later on for like the new employee that will be hired in. Also, replacement of the city clerk's computer along my own. Those first additional costs is five hundred and twenty-five dollars for all those items. And then the monthly fees for the new person is two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is there any questions on any of those numbers or what they, those numbers cover? Yes, sir.
Do you love it?
So last week, yeah, Monday, last week at meal was Thursday. We met with Nate, the salesperson came up and spoke to us. We expressed our concerns that some of the services that we were not being provided. And he was unaware of that and very upset that the services that we're not being provided. And there's some, there are changes being made, such as example that, you know, we're going to have quarterly meetings with them to say what's good, what's bad, what's happening, what's not happening, feedback, stuff like that. So he was unaware of the issues that we were having. Now that we had that meeting with him, he is more on board and more punctual with what's going on in the city. So that, I believe that meeting was a productive meeting and much more moving forward. Well, this was, this was, yes, they are working on some of those, like, for example, some of the replacement computers. It took, we had five different quotes, so we actually met with him and spoke to him because he was a salesperson. He said, these are the accurate numbers and other things such as like, you know, when we lose service, so on and so forth. How, you know, we send out email response for tech request, we're getting responses for two, three weeks. We came to our, a solution to that as well. So we're slowly making our way through the problems to make sure they get fixed, they don't happen moving forward.
Another question, is you guys are buying equipment, new equipment? Is it new or replacing our old existing?
We're not buying new equipment.
So how it works, so we have choices which we want to choose from. Either we can go out and buy the equipment outright on our own, for example, from Best Buy. At that point, then they will install all their software, all whatever they need.
At cost.
At, at, at the cost. Or we can go within, they say, depending what you need a computer for, you can go with a new one from them or get a refurbished one, depending what you're, you needed. And some of those costs are included, some of them are not, depending on the route you want to get. Like, for example, my computer was under warranty, it's not an additional cost for my computer. So you went to city clerks. But with the new person coming on a code, obviously that's a new cost because that wasn't in the original agreement.
Yeah, or it was supposed to be in the original agreement, for some reason or other, it was left out. The computer on the desk where I sit at and the telephone, where there was supposed to be a desktop and a phone put there in the original work and it wasn't done. So now this is part of the, the activation fee and the two seventy-five, I think, is for that new computer.
Correct, yes, and then.
The monthly fee.
That's the monthly.
Yeah, and then the monthly fee is obviously monitoring it, services, all that type of stuff.
But the monthly fee on that for thirty-one months is a lot more than you're going to spend on the.
The monthly fee isn't just for the computer. It's for the, it's for the licensing.
Their protection, their service.
The licensing, the service of it, the licensing, the internet, or not the internet, but the.
Their protection.
Yeah, the ordens or whatever they use and the phone. And the phone.
Any other questions? All right. I'm not.
No, no, the contract, the contract, it's a forty-eight month contract and we're already over two years into it.
I understand that. The agreement is for thirty-one months.
Yeah, I don't know what that says, but after the phone call, the, the agreement stops all at one time. It's not static. So if this whole agreement would be up, is when it's all up and then if we agree up with that, that is for four more years or three more years and four more years.
Yeah, thirty-one months is remaining in our, in our contract.
This two seventy-five is for the next thirty-one months.
That is correct, that's the cost of one desktop and one phone service with all the things that they provide, yes. Which I'm not disagreeing, that's not a lot of money, but you know, that's, that's.
It's only seven thousand dollars.
But that's.
Thirty-one months.
Okay, but we still, that's the internet? That's, that's all.
The internet, so, so.
But it's the licensing fees through every computer, so often the client access license, that has to be done. And I don't think it's any different than where it was when the numbers that we got written.
If I get your drum, I'm not disagreeing with you all, it's a lot of money, but like, that's the company we have.
Is that the same fee even if we purchased a computer on our own?
Yeah, that doesn't, like I said, that's just for the licensing from the watch it maintain it.
So that's nothing to do with.
It says nothing.
The rental, the lease, the anything.
None of those.
Okay.
As I said, that's just what it is. And like I said, that's what we're agreed upon a year and a half of these costs. So this is what they're costing us now.
And I also think part of that fee is that we're adding a laptop because Jolynn is keeping.
Well, we're adding one for the new, for the new court because her laptop is going on five years old and that's outdated. No point in giving a new person a laptop that's going on five years old.
Actually, that two seventy-five would be for adding two, two, two new units.
Two new devices. All right, so I'll make the motion to accept these terms with inter-dat. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Right here?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Hey, sir?
Yes. Uh, the other additional was accept the resignation of Sarah Chapel. She wrote a letter here of her resignation. It said, Dear City Council, I'd like to inform you that I'm resigning as of June twenty-sixth. I had the opportunity for a position to better myself and my family. I had a wonderful experience working for the city of Sumbray, but no longer can take the hostile work environment and the lack of team effort that is needed to fulfill my job duties. So I make the motion to accept her resignation. Do I have a second?
I'll second the prejudice.
Right here?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Hey, sir?
Yes. Moving on to business. Uh, records for permits and permit application when members over the chief.
Yeah, so going back, looking at monthly permits, there really is no record keeping of that in the treasurer's office, the tablet that they write the stuff on. So we're getting calls about, well, this car doesn't have a permit this lot, this car doesn't have. And besides them, one, ruffling through, uh, their tablets somewhere in the office. This is a better way that they're going to, people come in, very simple, you fill it out, name, number, vehicle, stuff like that, and they'll forward that to us. So I had X, my office manager, making a spreadsheet on one pump basis, so we get track of when cars, you know, maybe the permit dropped out of the dash or something, we can verify that we have, they have the permit. So there's no, there's no tracking in the city right now of the permit.
So it's more of, you know, making things more organized for what it costs.
Yeah, a little bit clearer so we can kind of have track of that. So I'd like to have this put in place so we can kind of keep better track of it.
Questions, anyone on that?
Yes.
Oh, cool.
As a new employee that we're hiring, why couldn't you be doing that? Since we pay you attention to this.
Wait, I'm sorry.
You mean creative out?
Well, I think, I don't think he's disagreeing with that. I think he, we need, we don't have an application right now, we need.
Then you have nothing. You have to make a commitment, it's not, it's paper. So this way, they know how, they, they're going to have it down there, but they're going to forward it down to us. So we have a copy of it too, so we're not worried about who, who doesn't have permits.
A spreadsheet also, they, they don't, well, they're wanting to.
Yeah, because one of these things, we're moving forward into that twenty, two thousand twenty-three with procedure.
Okay, okay, I could see the spreadsheet, but that person might not be buying that every month. That's the one I'm saying, it could be a different person. So everybody that buys that permit, there'll be a name.
They still have to come in, they commit in treasurer's office now, every month, and they write names on a piece of paper or a map. Every month they got to come again. This way, we have something on record that can move it, call them, they move it out of the lot, or people have it. It's right here. And in treasurer's office will have it too, because they're going to forward a copy of it down to us. So we have them for our purposes, what we're going to call them out in a lot.
Any other questions? All right, I'll make the motion to accept that new permit application. Do I have a second?
Martina?
Yes, Easter?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Uh, police UTV, as you know, I talked to some of you beforehand, last year in July, we went out and perked both. We ordered UTVs from one of the companies here. It's gone on over a year since we ordered them. I spoke with them last week. Uh, they said a projection date, if we're lucky, is mid-July. I said, what's our guarantee of getting them? They said, well, obviously, there's never a guarantee. And so I called some other local dealerships, they said they could get them within a few days because they haven't been stopped. Sadly, they were over the threshold at which we need to go out for sealed bids to do that. I was in contact with Jamie. Uh, we did everything we needed to do other than going out for sealed bids because it was not the lowest quote. And due to it not being co-stars, we couldn't go with a higher quote since they were not co-stars. So I just want to make everyone aware, just going for the police one, if they come in, that's great. If they don't come in, I want to move forward to get this UTV because the whole point of buying one to get it was to help save taxpayer dollars, getting the vehicle off the road, maintenance, so on and so forth. So I'm just letting you know, I'm going to go out, you know, advertise for bid on the UTV that we, all the specs and things like that are in contact with four local dealerships. I think we all dealt with them just so they can submit the bids. And if we get a bid beforehand, that's great. If we don't, it's, it's no big deal either way, but.
How does that affect the contracts that we already signed?
Well, did we, I mean, to my knowledge, did we sign a contract with anybody yet?
Well, we signed for, I mean, we signed for them for them, for them.
But talking from the dealership, I, I spoke to him, like, I said, are we guaranteed to get them on this round? Because originally we were promised the end of twenty-twenty-two, then April, then he's like, well, mid-July. I'm like, all right, is that, we're going to get them this time? He's like, well, I can't guarantee you, but you're high on the priority list. So like I said, I said, I just want to get the ball rolling because I don't want to wait another.
You just don't have a backup plan?
Exactly, if it doesn't work out, especially you get one here in three days compared to waiting another six months. And the whole point was for the police department, so they get on the other side, will that be to save insurance on the vehicle and other maintenance and via fuel and so on and so forth. I just want to get the ball rolling and if it comes in, that's great. If it doesn't, it's not a big deal, but I want to get the ball rolling so there's a plan B. I just want to make everyone aware of that. For the police department only, I said, this isn't very much else, this is for the police department only.
So you get yours and I want ours.
Yes.
What is the purpose of the UTV?
For the police department? So right now, we have our code enforcement, excuse me, our parking enforcement officer driving around an old Crown Vic. That's from like the nineties, probably when I was still in diapers. So, so the point is getting rid of that vehicle because the cost of vehicle insurance compared to the UTV is, you know, peanuts, fuel cost, maintenance cost on that vehicle, plus the UTV is under a five-year maintenance, um, cycle, yes, thank you. And also being able to get on the other side of the levy wall if there are issues, because right now we can't. And if we have to, we have to go down to DPW to get one of their vehicles. So in a sense, it's giving us ability to go on the other side of the wall and also at the same time, save a couple taxpayer dollars from, you know, insurance, fuel, maintenance, and the overall picture.
Okay, and the other thing that the UTV does, I, does multiple things and one of them is collect the parking meter money.
And repairing the.
Yeah, how they will be used. They might be his vehicle to use.
Yeah, it'll be an multi-purpose vehicle for the police department to do what they need to do.
Okay, and just one other thing, to back up to the other, um, thing, record of permits. Um, I, I don't know what capabilities are within the city, but spreadsheets can be shared?
Well, we.
And it can be tracked if anybody makes anything.
A change.
You know, that would be.
Yes.
You know where I'm going.
I know where you're going with this, but the technology that allows you to do that, we don't have that capability with our technology.
I'm sorry to be.
Here we go.
Here we go.
Well, what I'm saying, but, but do we use it? We do not at times.
It gives you, you know, freedom, we, because there.
Yeah.
Because technology can be great and it could be detrimental. And if you don't understand that whole thing.
Yeah, but, all right, moving on to the UTV. Yes, purchasing of new rifles, team, I'm turning this back over to you again.
Yeah, so the rifle, the current tore rifles we have are over twenty years old. We, uh, a couple of guys went out and solicited some, some, a couple of the businesses that stepped forward, uh, mainly Mr. Byder, Byder's donated, uh, from their foundation and personally, uh, thirteen thirty-seven Holdings, uh, Brad Meek and Aigurak donated, plus we had some funds left over from the calendar and plus the special grants out of the police department. So it's not going to cost taxpayers any money. Um, the quotes are in front of you, I just need a motion to purchase those. Also, some of the money coming back from the sale, we'll have to, we have, still have forty-five ammunition that we're going to sell to another police department or law enforcement and it'll cover the whole cost of everything. So we know, no cost to the city.
Okay, questions, anyone?
Yes, a question, are we trading anything into them?
We're trading the ones we currently have.
All right.
All right.
And the thirty, three thousand, thirty-six, forty-two is what the final cost is?
That's just, that's just for the rifles. There's another sheet in there that you have for some other things they're putting on slings, lights, sights, stuff like that.
On the very back page.
The total cost of everything is ninety-two hundred and eleven dollars, eighty-six cents minus trade-in. The city cost is forty-five hundred and seventy-one dollars, eighty-six cents, and I have that all, it's all going to be covered without any tax.
All right. All right, question, any other questions? All right, so I'll make the motion, uh, excuse me, I'll make the motion to accept the cost of these rifles. Do I have a second?
Awesome.
Easter?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Uh, TS, TA set aside grant, Mr. Backer?
Um, last, I believe it was last meeting, we talked about the TA set aside grant and speaking with, uh, Councilman Martina and, uh, Councilman Easter, we talked about doing sidewalks at the riverfront. Um, so the application period is open. There is, it's technically a two-step application process, uh, July seventeenth, the draft, draft application due. And September fifteenth is the final application. And you won't know without an award from, till late winter, early spring, twenty twenty-four. Um, it is a no-match requirement for this, however, they do not pay engineering. Um, so, and the max you can go for is one point five million, the lowest is fifty thousand. Um, so really, if we went with, if we decided to do the river, uh, river walkways, the concrete walkways, um, honestly, we probably could spend one point five million dollars doing it. However, ten percent, a good rule of thumb is ten percent of the cost of the project is the cost of engineering. So it's really up to you guys, if that's the project you really wanted to do, how much you would want to go for because that would be a beautiful sum of how much it would cost us for engineering.
Can you use the grant funds for engineer, oh, use that number?
Yeah, yeah.
So whether we go for.
We would have, we would have to find it some other.
Yeah, so whether it's, so whether it's one point two-five million or fifty thousand, figure about ten percent. So I guess the question is, if we get awarded, how much do we want to buy for, for one? And if we do get awarded, where are the funds going to come out for engineering? Or do we look for, all right, we have, is there a time limit in which we need to spend the funds by?
There will be in the contract, though it's usually three, three years, yeah.
All right, so that's three-year timeframe, we could possibly find other grants to help set, offset the cost of engineering and/or take it out of the queue.
I want to take a look back too and see if any of the prior project in that area done, survey work and so forth, that lead, would we do it, at least we would have something worth.
Give an idea. All right, any? All right, so are, are we going to shoot for the stars and go for the max?
Yeah, well, do the planner, the, the first, uh.
The draft application, yeah. I mean, they, you can change it between that and the final, uh, final submission. Really, the pre-application is me filling out a few, a little bit of piece of paperwork, and then I have to talk to head office. That's really what it is.
So I guess I'll make the motion to apply for the TA set aside grant. Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Councilman Barnhart, you are up.
From the Kramer subdivision, Deputy Supervisor Mike Rhodes.
Gentlemen, we have an application, uh, that needs a final approval. For a subdivision at two twelve South Fourth Street, Jennifer Kramer, uh, just a small, very minor subdivision. Uh, she's subdividing fifty feet, almost, excuse me, fifty-one, point six two feet, long by thirty feet wide off of her property. Uh, I do have plans here if you'd like to see them. Everybody approved, including county municipal authority, but really nothing further.
All right, any questions, anyone?
No.
All right, oh, sorry.
I make the motion to approve the Kramer subdivision.
Second.
Right here?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Hey, sir?
Yes, keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Mr. Rhodes, would you, uh, the signatory authorization for Mike Rhodes, assigned for sewer planning, mail their applications? Make a motion to approve that?
Second.
Mike has a question.
Well, I just wanted to mention, that is for the Haven Ministry project.
Yes, the Haven, yeah.
Yes, that's my, but, yeah, that works too.
Yeah, Haven Ministry, the sewer signs off, like, he played for the football stadium.
We'll make it happen for you. I'll second his motion.
Right here?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Hey, sir?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Mr. Rhodes, would you, uh, explain?
Uh, the Hart met, um, last Tuesday, uh, to discuss a project at 134 Chesson Street. Um, it used to be the White House, the White House or Chesson Street, used to be owned by, uh, by mostly nuts, trying, my mind's going blank on the owner.
Sherrill's Drive.
Sherrill Hill, thank you. That's all I needed, was the first name. I got it from that. Anyhow, their, uh, proposal was to replace the roof, which is already done. Uh, and then they want to replace the windows and the main door, but they're not gonna interfere with the aesthetics, um, of it. And, um, they want to replace rain guard in the front, they will, there again, they want to stay with the half-round, uh, to keep the aesthetics. And, uh, they want to paint the entire structure, which is not under the Hart regulations, but it's gonna be a two-tone gray for what they do.
And Hart already approved?
Hart, Hart is recommending counsel for...
Martina?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Keep going, Councilman Barnhart, keep going.
Wait, wait, I have a question about Hunter Ford. So, um, what are they going to do with the interior?
I have no clue, I, we, Hart has no jurisdiction over interiors, just exterior.
Like sound of a bear, um, okay.
Oh, you mean as far as, yes, she's correct. I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you asked me. Uh, yes, they're, they're totally refurbishing the interior.
Okay, because I spoke to one of those gentlemen, and they said that they were going to make tenant, um, or the division out of it?
Okay, I, I have not received any application on that.
Okay.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Uh, make a motion to reinstate Russell Wors, who's system fired chief, pending further investigation. And his back pay, will not receive back pay from January until June, until the investigation's over.
You mean, will, he will be here until?
Yeah, once, once the investigation's over, go receive a back pay, but until then, he will, now, wanting...
Huh? Depending on the...
Yeah, depending on further investigation.
Can I ask you what that's for, what?
We, it's per...
We have no idea.
We, we can't discuss...
So why are we giving him money if we don't know what the problem is?
We, we can't, we're, this is not a discussion right now, we had our chance in the meeting earlier to make public comment on agenda items, so we're not...
Okay, so I can ask afterwards?
You can ask afterwards, alright.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Martina?
I would like to make the motion that we promote Mike Hefner, moving from part-time to full-time, and there being no charge to his hourly pay.
Second. Yes. Keep going, Councilman Martina.
I do not, I'm gonna be promoting the part-time labor he was offered, a full-time position with his previous employer when he...
Alright, so no need for that one?
No need for that at the current time.
Councilman Rechner, you are up.
I covered that.
No, the next one will up it, already processed. Go ahead.
There's been a request for exoneration of taxes for two individuals over $140.32 for nine residents. I make a motion to exonerate those taxes.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Yes, keep going, Councilman Rechner.
Okay, uh, we are in conjunction with, in conjunction with CareerLink. We're looking to hire a person right now as a part-time person that will invest in moving to a full-time position. Through their program, and they will be following or providing, um, 50% of the wages. It's gonna be a training program, but we have possible change coming up, like I said, within a few years, so within our office, if somebody needs something like that, I'm gonna get somebody up to speed, so the transition is smoother than what it is, or smoother. But I make the motion, we made that hire, um...
I'll second.
Thank you.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
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 Keep going, Councilman.
Absolutely, okay. We have expenditures of the general fund of $228,940.51. My vehicle fuel, $230.24. I make the motion, we pay those bills?
Martina?
Yes.
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Uh, discussion items, or, oh.
Do we have a plan of the, uh, tax, what, uh...
I have that right in here now.
Well, that's, he was, for, for, I was, we need to signature and send it.
Yep, I got that here to sign, so we can get that after tomorrow. Alright, discussion items, there are a few, uh, just wrapping up the summer kickoff. Um, it was a great success minus, minus the hail and the torrential downpour, that it didn't rain for like six weeks. Um, we got a lot of travel to our Facebook page, I believe we had over 100,000 views to our page in the last four months, and over 30,000, uh, like, likes and shares to help to promote the event. I was talking to a lot of the vendors, they, before the hail hit, um, they made a decent fund on showing up, whether it was, uh, the food, merchandise, whatever it may be, the vendors made out very well. And then, once the storm cleared, everybody came back, listened to the music, so it was a successful event, like I said. A lot of people were involved, I know Slade was, uh, Sierra, Jolynn, myself, Maggie, and a lot of other people, especially the city workers that made it possible for setup, teardown, it was, it was a good team event that made a success, so I just want to give everybody an update on that. So it was good, and a lot of...
It was all of you guys, right?
Yes.
Uh, is it the intention of the city to have this yearly, the first Saturday in June?
If, I mean, that's the intention. What could happen, who knows, between now and next year, but that would be something, yes, that would be a great goal to have, yes.
Right, because I think there would be planning around that with other events.
Yeah, I mean, I think when it comes into next year's budget season, because we did take a small portion of like economic development to help, you know, start it up. So I think the talk will be started earlier next year in the form of a new budget, so we can start planning sooner. Because I know, uh, the sandwich stroll people said they had a huge success. And I know a lot of downtown local businesses said they had a huge success from, you know, just the outsiders coming in. When I mean outsiders, I meant like people from like New Jersey, Ohio, New York, or people coming to Sunbury. And even as close as like Pillow, people didn't even realize we had a riverfront on the other side of the wall. So a lot of people got to experience Sunbury for the first time, and had a very positive experience of Sunbury. And they're asking, many people, even the vendors, like, you know, is, is this gonna happen next year, we need more city events like this? So it was a successful event.
And so going back to my original statement, why isn't the city promoting Sunbury? How historic that?
That's a very good question.
Just learn the alphabet again?
It's not done, we're paying out our final invoices this week, trying to get the final, uh, few grants from the Dakenstein to help also fund this event, so we don't have a dollar amount yet where we made out, but it looks like it's, we're gonna be open. And then, any other questions? Alright, the next one here is recreational. Recreational upgrades, I know I spoke about this a few months ago, about, you know, as Julie said, about, you know, promoting Sunbury, and I think one of our biggest assets in the city of Sunbury is our recreational facilities. And trying to upgrade and bringing it up to modern times and expanding upon them, as we said about earlier tonight, expanding the sidewalk up Front Street to continue that walking path. And, you know, we all know there's like, there, there are upgrades that need to be made to our facilities and make them better. There's people who want to invest in making them better to expand upon them, so. Next council, we'd like to have a work session, just so we can put some of these ideas on, on the table, so, you know, here's the grand scheme of things, here's a picture we want to do. Alright, put a plan together, and then at the same time, alright, now we can, you know, we applied for this grant, now we need money for, you know, the engineering cost to do, you know, whatever it may be, we need to improve on this, that, and the other, so I want to have that meeting next week, so we can get a plan together, so not just talk about Front Street, but, you know, the entire city, how we can help, you know, promote it and help bring people into the city, because we have a lot to offer, but just not capitalizing on all the opportunity quite yet, so.
Next week or before this council?
No, before the next council meeting, sorry.
So we, we have let it be worked.
Correct, correct, yes. Any questions upon that, anyone? And hopefully come with ideas, like I said, it's open to the public, so if the public has any ideas which they would like to see, come and present.
It's a place to start and get everything down, and then just start putting it order, which is the best way to go.
Exactly. Anyone else? Questions on that? Councilman Ister, bicycle?
Bicycles, yeah, bicycles in the warehouse, probably 50 of them, talk to the Boy Scout group that's doing the, uh, wetlands. And they have agreed to take the bicycles, they're gonna put bicycles together, give to youngsters that don't have a bicycle, and then they're also gonna take and, uh, try and work on their merit badges, put some bicycles together and use them for long trail riding and so forth, and then get into the nature and so forth, so. Anybody's any questions regarding bicycles? I know Steve wants to get them out as much as I do, because we run out of room out there, I'll take a bigger range just to have to pick up their bicycles.
Which he can do, it's a good cause.
They've been down there for at least a year, Brad, at least a year, right? I've been here five years, yeah.
Alright, awesome. Alright, uh, some announcements, accepting letters of interest to fill the vacant three-year term on the Board of Appeals in the Hart. One position to fill for the vacancy for a three-year term on the civil service, please, uh, submit all letters to the city clerk. Uh, the next council meeting will be hea... Oh, yeah. Next council meeting will be held here at City Hall on June 26th, sixth, at 6:15. Uh, there's a special birthday tomorrow, it's Francis's birthday, he wanted me to give him a public shout-out, which I... I would say, since happy birthday, we're gonna bust the windows out of here. Uh, and I believe, Jeff, you had an announcement, but, comment?
Real quick, for council, I just wanted to update you, our last week, what we did, we, we covered the entire map of Sunbury. Uh, you're probably gonna get some phone calls, some angry people, but we pointed out what people don't see, I said, I always look up. So looking up, we see busted windows, uh, broken siding, broken roofs. We sent out 155 cases, 155 letters, to try and coach people to get things fixed, to make it a little nicer, and make it look more inviting to the city of Sunbury. I said, you guys know, and I talked to you all about the broken window theory, I said, I believe in it, I'm, I'm a believer in it, I always talk about it. I want people to come here, and I said, these little things that we're gonna fix, that we are fixing, so you're gonna get your complaints, but you can address them back to me. Uh, we handed out about 50, uh, insurance flyers for renters, and I gave out 50 speeches for why it's so important, our rental insur, our rental insurance is. Fifth and Arch, that, that, uh, building of Fifth and Arch, that's going really smoothly, we just got all the power cut off. The box should be taken, it should be, I'm hoping down to the ground by the end of July, I'm hoping. Um, we did Saturday, we did a tire and television recycling program, we bought in a little over 200 tires, 32, uh, excuse me, 30, 200 TVs, 32 tires, and that, I said, with every recycling program we do, we take a little bit more fire fuel out of your basements, out of your attics, out of your living rooms. So I said, we all win, we all, we all did well. Um, during the walk-around, we had three cars towed away, people didn't know how to do it, they just let them sit there, let them sit there, buy. We talked to the owners, they got their cars towed, gone. All it took us was just a little, a little bit of coaching. And our code office, last year we quoted, or two years ago, we quoted $37,000, or digital. We've done it for about $500, and we're 90% better. We did say a whole, whole, uh, on going digital with the staff we have, and all our maps, everything, even all the way up to the new project for the high school, that's already digital, that costs about 40 bucks, but we're digital on that. All the plans on thumb drives, so we have those things, if you guys want to see, you can have them. I'm hoping to get them put away somewhere, so that fire, flood, something, we have for the next year.
Do you give it on the commercial inspections also?
Commercial inspection, we're still at 28 that have not paid, we're gonna go to the next step of those. The, the inspections are going great, inspections are going great, I said, the small things, people are fixing the small things, and, and the, the re-inspections, they're going quickly. Uh, the ones that haven't, uh, we're gonna go to letter next, tell them that they've more than passed the deadline, and administratively, we're gonna go to search form. Search, go inspect the property, and then, uh, it'll be a lien against the property. Like I said, there's 28 left as of today. Which one? The, the...
Tires and TV?
We, 200 TVs, 32 tires, and I said, with, with, there was no proceeds, but we dealt with the young fellow, he's under here to get rid of the tires. He's also gonna help us clean up a property on Third Street, so with, out of nothing, out of no money, we've gotten 32 tires and a property on Third Street that the garage we had were down. He's gonna help us get rid of it for no cost, so we want, we want damage.
Is there any public comment at this time, on the clerk up front, and you work your way back, please state your name?
And so I realize that you want to get rid of the bicycles, and I understand that, but would there, would you entertain maybe like at Christmas time, if these bikes are in fairly good shape?
These are abandoned bikes, and, and the concept here is, they're gonna be remunerated just by repairing the bikes, getting them into some sort of proper shape and that type of thing, but these are abandoned bikes that are just...
Right, but what I'm saying...
There's no gems.
Well, you know, a kid that never had bicycles.
The Boy Scouts, he gets a little more, is giving bikes to needy people.
Well, my...
Yeah, that's what the Boy Scouts, I think, are planning on doing.
Please state your name?
Victoria Rosenkrane. Um, just under announcements, five days ago on Facebook, um, this wasn't one of them, but, uh, there was a announcement for citizens that one of the participants, City Comprehensives, changed a plan, they gave me some letters to, to back it up. How's that process gonna happen, when people, those letters come in, how are people changed?
It will be council attempt, this is how it goes.
Council, okay. Um, the part-time treasurer's office position that you talked about, Mr. Rechner. Um, now, is that gonna be open to all folks that are folks of the career, that are willing?
I think they already have somebody involved.
But they're coming into the city office, right? So that's not available to all?
Wasn't?
We had, we put an application...
It was already advertised?
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, that was all done.
So are those people, so that was put out in the paper through the CareerLink or through the city?
Through the city.
Yeah, we advertised it, in the paper, we advertised it with CareerLink.
Okay, and so in the applicants that came in outside of the CareerLink, were interviewed?
We only, we had two applicants, actually, and one of them, the one we were gonna hire, was down here.
So I'm just making...
And the gentleman was 67 years old.
Be careful there, um, you don't be careful with that, so, um, anyway, so I just want to make sure that the other citizens have a right to be applying for the application. I get the whole 50% CareerLink saving, or whatever, but it's still the city office, which citizens should have a right to be able to apply for those things. Um, I'm not really...
It was posted in the newspaper.
I heard you say that twice, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Okay, why, number one, you know, why do you, why, I'm gonna ask this because it aggravates me, is that when people are up here, you're interjecting as a controller. Okay, so you've already said it to me once, I've heard. This is what?
This is, this is statements, it's not a discussion.
Really? Well, there was lots of statements following, it's only because it's Victoria Rosenkrane.
No, it's not, people...
It's only because it's Victoria Rosenkrane, I get it.
Six or seven more people down here waiting to come up.
I get it, well, guess what, my things are important too, you know what, so let's move on to the important one. Actually, okay, there we go, because it's only Victoria Rosenkrane that we're gonna shut her up now, well, guess what? I, it's a right to know, let's talk about a right to know, Mr. Backer. Uh, so I'd really like to talk about, I'm never bringing it up again, let's talk about Celotex. So I was actually kind and retracted one of my rights to know, but now, after speaking with the state, I have some more questions. So whether you want to answer them, and you're, you're telling me now that you don't have to answer them, so I know where I can go to get the answers. I've already spoke with Holly at the state, so when my right to know was filed, it was late, okay?
With, I, I don't, with, with...
With you.
I, I don't know a right to know, to know you're talking about.
The right to know for the Celotex thing, so...
The, for, for the grant you grant? You, but, I gave you, I gave the grant to Jolynn, because the right to know you gave to her, and she didn't have access to the grant.
Right.
So I gave her the application, and she gave you the application.
Okay, so she was on vacation, so talk me through that, so if your city court and your right to know officer is on vacation during that five-day period of time, and I didn't get a response, because you sent it back to Jolynn?
No, I didn't send it... No, I didn't send it, I didn't, I never received a right to know request. The right to know request came to her, and then she asked me for the RAPP application, because she didn't have access to it. So, I gave that to her, and then she gave that to you, from my understanding.
So, the RAPP request was on five months, is what I requested, send to Derek Backer, the officer, general, grant manager on five twelve requesting document. I started vacation on five fifteen and returned to the office on five twenty-three. I was not able to check emails while I'm out of the office, like I usually am able to. When I returned on five twenty-three, twenty-three, I noticed that the backup officer sent the information requested to my email and not the requested. I immediately released the attached document to the post.
I would have to check my email, but the way it made- But, um, so-
Okay, so-
I can check, but from my, from my, the way I interpreted the email was that she did not have access to the RAPP application. So, I sent her the RAPP application.
But she was, okay, so my question is, she was on vacation, so when you sent it back to her, she was on vacation. So, who's the backup right to know officer when Jolynn's out of the office?
I, me.
Okay, because you did receive an email, because I have the email before Jolynn went on vacation. She forwarded me the email that she forwarded to you to say that I'm going on vacation, here's the email, this is what Victoria's requesting.
I would have to go, I would have to go back and look.
Okay, well, I'm letting you know, because what happened is, I didn't get a response to my right to know, okay? So, if you read the ordinance, no response to the right to know means that if I don't get a response, then that tells me I'm not gonna get the information, correct? Yep, that's what your ordinance says. So, then I had to file an appeal at the state, because I didn't get any correspondence.
I'm sorry, what date, did you say that there was correspondence?
So, regardless, so I'm just letting you know that that all occurred, and as of today, I forwarded the email, cause I have it.
Please do, thank you.
Because here's all the information that Jolynn submitted to the state when left. So, I retracted from today, I had to follow up with the state again, because I had to file that appeal process, because I didn't receive any information at the time. So, today I retracted, I withdrew my mediation, because I did get the information, okay? So, now my next question is, I would like to go back to the Celotex thing as a, back to the February. So, the RAPP was, during application went out on three twenty-six, twenty-one. And then back to February, it was said that the RAPP was an extension, correct, Mr. Backer?
I-
That's when you told me last, that it was an extension.
No, I didn't tell you that last meeting, I told you that, I told you that, I told you that at the meetings before last meeting, cause I clarified that.
So, it was an extension?
Originally, I thought it was an extension, because I didn't know what we were talking about.
You originally thought it was an extension?
Correct, because I was not present at that meeting, so, because I did not submit a second RAPP application. The only thing we've done for that RAPP application is submitted extensions, so I assume-
How many extensions did you submit? So, every six months an extension was that?
Yes, two or three at this point, I think it did probably run three, I would say.
So, you, so originally, so the original grant was nine million, but they only gave you two million, then you got the formal, you got a-
The original application request was eighteen something.
It was nine million with nine million match.
Yeah, 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 correct.
Yeah, uh, so, so you got the letter of the warrant, right?
Correct.
So, and then you had to do the, the, um, business plan and all of that, right?
Uh, we have, we are in that process, that is the second, second application that we're in the process, there's twenty-three tablets.
So, can you explain to me in the tax payers what happens now, because that grant that you put in for the original nine million, plus nine, eighteen, and then it came out to two million, and now we're at a new proposal with the county. So, so all of this stuff that you're submitting now, um, is that, so, because some of the stuff that's in there, like putting down the cement pad, building the building and all that, is that all still stuff that's happening with that grant?
So, what, from our standpoint with the, the grant, we would have to decide how we want to spend that two million, three million, whether it is a concrete pad, whether it is to purchase the property, whether that is to build a roadway in there, whether that's excavation, building the roadway, whether, you know, and we would have to decide on, on how to allocate those funds within that property.
So, just, okay, so just clarifying, and so now, and we update, so last time you guys were going to meet with the county, and I think that happened, and so is there any update on where we are with that proposal?
We met with the county, and that's as far as it went as of right now. We said they were gonna take it back to all the commissioners to discuss yea, nay, changes, and that's where we at, and we haven't, we haven't not heard back from those, as a council.
Alright, so that's all, I was just getting clarification, and I did speak with Holly, Rentier at the budget state, and just to ask some questions, um, so, and just asking about the extensions, because she went over and met with me and the business plan and all those things, because I'm just, um, just the way the, the questions, my questions were handled and the confusion between your grant, whatever. So, um, so I, I asked for some more information from the state, so I'm sure they'll send it to me. And, oh, I did meet with, um, I met with Jeff the other day, there are some, there's some issues going on up on Reagan Street with the property and some folks that are living around there. I sent him some information, um, he's gonna take care of one of the issues. But one of the other issues that I've seen, because it almost hit somebody, um, I'm seeing a lot of ATVs and four-wheelers and stuff being driven out on city streets, and I almost hit someone down on Wall Street, came, came flying out of the yard, and I almost hit him going down to the food truck. Um, well, currently having ordinance.
It's being addressed.
It's being addressed, okay, cause, um, there, I'm just seeing a lot of that going on, it gets more and more.
You don't need a state, you don't need a city order, it's a state law.
Okay, but, and that this property unfortunately is a very long yard, and most of the yards, like Jeff discussed, like in Sunbury, you don't have that much room to be able to run ATVs, and on Mother's Day, it was absolutely horrendous. Um, they, they sent me video and stuff, and I met with three of them.
Did they call the police?
They have called the police, they have met with Jeff before, but one of the things is, I encourage them to come to council. This is just one of the things that, that happens, because, you know, I'm not trying to step on anyone's toes, but they're afraid to come here and do what we do then. They're afraid to come up and fall, you know, because, because people don't have those skills. So, I met with them, I took the information to Jeff, so I said I could, thank you for addressing the work that for the, for the bikes, because it, like I said, it's not just there, I'm seeing it, you're aware, down at the end of town, the upper tabs are trying to get out on-
Yeah, that's the reason, now, people call you and ask you questions on it, if they can, if there's a DC mark tag on them, or they absolutely know who it is, give us the best description in Kansas, until we get there, they're basically gone.
Now, they do take video, and a lot of them don't have, they're not street legal, um, there's some other issues going on up there, but it's hard for them.
Can you pass all the videos to the police?
Yeah, yeah, I, I have all that, I just haven't had a chance, yeah.
Please state your name.
Josh, who is Jolynn under you, right, who recommends her view?
Technically-
Oh, until next, yeah.
Well, technically speaking, every, all city employees fall under all city council, I mean, you should directly under my-
Okay, so this is my question, is I've been to school, I've been to the school and asked for rights to knows, I've been here and asked for rights to knows, I've always gotten the answer that, well, we're gonna extend it in a letter. So, if Jolynn knew she was gonna go on vacation for five days, and she knew that he would need that information, why did she not just extend the-
Well, because that's why we have two right to know officers. If someone goes down, just like in most departments, if someone goes down, there's a backup, so he was our backup.
Yeah, I just know, I've always, I've always experienced right to knows-
Well, I mean, when there's one-
Through here and through the school, and they've always done extensions, always, just so you have more time to get the information. So, I just wanted to ask that question. But the other question I wanted to ask was the Russell Worts, um, what position was he in and who was he under?
Are you asking me, or are you asking council over here?
Is he in code?
Well, he falls under public safety, being a fire chief.
That would be me.
So, is this something we need, I mean, when was he hired, I guess I should-
He was elected.
He was elected.
He's elected, and it's, like I said, it's personnel, so-
So, it makes it hard when they're elected to kinda get rid of, okay. And when was the alleged, uh, issue that happened, when did that happen?
January.
Of this year?
They're elected by the fire department, by the city.
Were the police involved in it? Did the police have to get involved with it?
They were involved, it's just that I can't come.
How much, uh, is the back pay for him?
I don't like that, how many months it is, but it's, uh-
I, I mean, I mean, this is getting with personnel information, like I said, pump out, and it's not occurred, so you, the-
But this is the thing though, Josh, do we as a taxpayer, or do we need to be concerned? I mean, was it pedophilia, was it just a scandal, what was the issue?
We cannot, I mean, I understand your frustration, but we can, because it's a personnel issue, we cannot discuss the, it's what the investigation process right now, once it's all said and done, let the talk to our solicitor, let the public know what occurred, but it was a personnel issue, and it's what's taking place, we cannot, I mean, we, you can ask the questions, but we will not be able to answer them, because it's a personnel issue.
Alright, there's a little bit that we can tell, okay, or that we can talk about. At the recommendation of the fire department, we stopped his pay until the investigation was completed.
Okay, so if the fire department disrespected, why are we not adhering to what they're saying?
Then, we got a call stating that, I don't know quite what it was that, if we did not have a resolve, they wanted Brad to come back on duty.
That came from the fire department.
So, he comes back on duty, and we don't know if he's safe or not, the public doesn't know if he's safe or not, even though he's in public safety.
What, what do you mean by safe? Like I said, it's a very slippery slope.
But you're not telling us, was this pedophilia, was this race, was this, I mean, but that's what I'm saying, like, you have us concerned now, because we don't know what it was.
Due to the investigation, we cannot discuss, but from talking to our solicitor, our police department, and everyone involved with that decision, it was an appropriate decision for them to make-
Where's the, where's the?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that was my, and did we, do city council members, mayor, and elected officials, did they do a background check prior to being-
I, you would have, I, I would have-
Prior to being held in the office?
Yes, yes.
Do they? Okay, that's okay. Okay, and that's it?
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Oh, the one other thing I wanted to ask, Josh, was, okay, so you told me you couldn't ask questions, right? That there were one, two, three, four, five times that you asked questions, somebody asked you questions, and the board, and they were all allowed to ask questions and get answers, but when I asked, you said no.
Who asked questions and what they asked about? They made, like, statements and comments about things, or one thing would ask?
No, they didn't make statements, sometimes they ask questions. So, when, um, the signature for Mike Rhodes, the sewer plant that was atrocious here, um, HARB, the approval of that, um, was asked by atrocious. Uh, record permits was asked by atrocious police, UTV that would do, and, uh, that was atrocious. And then summer, um, kickoff party, or no, I'm sorry, the bicycles, the bicycles, um, and that was asked.
Well, I apologize, I know.
Yeah, I was just a little offended, I didn't know if it was just me, or-
No, like I said, I'll happily admit when I am wrong.
Thank you.
That probably the only time I ever hear that someone's wrong up here, so.
No, I've heard that before, but thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yeah.
Please state your name, sir.
Jerome Morales. Yes, Jerome Martin Milton, uh, thank you guys for the five hundred, uh, for the passes, uh, we're gonna be handing out, uh, so it very well. Thank you. The other hat is from Sina, uh, there's a meeting tomorrow at, uh, Town Hall at six-thirty at the elementary school.
Which elementary?
Chief, Shake Leech.
Chief Shake Leech.
Alright, thank you.
Eighteen, what time is that?
Six-thirty. Any other public comment at this time?
Yes, Mayor, we mentioned Francis, but we also have a birthday tomorrow, that's the young lady to the side, yeah, Sierra, Susan Mara.
Sierra, are you and Francis gonna be the same age? Any other public comment at this time? Alright, turn this meeting.